I call the committee of the whole meeting, April the 2nd. The order please. Roll call.
Daniel?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Misty?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Amber?
Here.
Please stand and play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I seek approval of agenda and I think Misty has one small thing she'd like to add to it.
Yes, we have Chelsea Stewart from the Peel Museum that has requested to join the museum board and she will be coming next meeting.
So...
So we just would like to add that to the agenda so in the minutes so that she can be presented in two weeks.
Well, okay.
Okay, now I seek approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve it again. Second, I'll second.
Roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Next, we need approval of March the 7th, committee of the whole meetings. Minutes, excuse me. Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Next, we have comments from citizens and they can speak on anything that's not on our large agenda tonight. So if you have a desire, please come forward.
Good afternoon. Kenneth Lovett, 18702 Clearwater Road. I'll bring this up, I hadn't had an opportunity to. Sorry, oh, I'm sorry, I'm hearing things. That happens sometimes. I hadn't had an opportunity to talk to any of our city officials or anything. I just want to bring it up to y'all. We continue regularly now having issues with odors, vapors, however you want to pronounce it, especially in the subdivisions across here. And I don't know if anybody's speaking up about that, but the city did buy previously, you know, our air test unit. We haven't been able to utilize that to the full extent since we know it's benzene, acrylene, nitrochloride and some more stuff. The tubes are $10, or 10 tubes for $90, I think. I'd like to see if we can get somebody qualified so they will believe them when they test it and get those three sets of tubes. And whenever people call, we need somebody to respond that knows what they're doing. And if I grab it and run out there, they're gonna say, well, you know how that goes. We need somebody from the city qualified that can respond. It's serious issues, we gotta do something. Thank you.
Mark Calcagni, 12642 Arbor Acres Road. Thank you for allowing public comment. I hope everybody had a great Easter. And these two right here, it's their 20th wedding anniversary today. So they're celebrating it here with everybody. Congratulations. I know you probably think some of us are crazy, but I think about this landfill over here. But I think we should all be crazy now that we know what's going on with the gases in the air. I mean, you know, the benzene, the acrylene, the sulfur dioxide, I mean, it's out there and it's proven. I'm here again to talk about the ordinances for the air and the water that I think and I hope the city will enact. And this is coming from a prominent Arkansas judge that has a lot of experience with this type of situation. And, you know, it's legal and so hopefully this will be something that would be enacted. And, you know, it's for any business, no matter what type of business this is or individual that's causing harm to the environment or the safety and health of people with respect to water and air. It's gotta be scientific. When I say scientific, it's gotta, you know, have some substance to it, which, you know, the National Guard tested, and there it is, right there. That's fact, you know, with the discovery of those gases. Water, you know, we have a hydrogeologist that's part of the city that had done some work for the city. So you have that information too. So hopefully you'll consider that, you know, and put that as part of a new business. And, you know, most of the complaints Kenneth mentioned is, you know, Ward 3. So I'm hoping, you know, somebody from Ward 3 would champion this. And if not Ward 3, maybe somebody that, you know, hopefully will, you know, understand that, you know, we gotta have safe water and safe air. Last thing, pollution control and ecology meeting is April 26th, this Friday. I know some of you have attended this, I know Daniel had been there. I think it would be great if we have, you know, people from the city, officials from the city that would be there. I think that would show, you know, support that, you know, this city cares about the people and the health of the citizens. It only lasts about an hour. Jackie and I, my wife and I, we usually drop down, you know, same day and come right back. And, yeah, it's almost a full day, but I think it's important that, you know, we all attend if we can. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing that, we'll move on to old business. Seeing that, we'll move on to new business, which is a discussion of impact study. That would be probably given off to Mr. Lang.
I got the short straw to do it. Just want to mention that before we get into this study, I'm not an expert on impact fees. So, you know, if you specifically want to have a large discussion on how they came up with the numbers and everything, we can always get the consultant on board to discuss that. Just want to make a comment from the standpoint that we're gonna talk a little bit about the fees. This is really the transportation area along with public safety. As you know, the city has grown tremendously in the last 12 years, 15 years. Really outside what its ability to manage the infrastructure. That's why we're here. Typically, a city, a good growth management plan for a city is to grow at 3% to 5%. That way you can control where your infrastructure's going. You can manage what you need to do. But with the growth that's happening, that's why we're looking at these impact fees. And I will tell you that, been talking to James and Zach, one of the things that has caused a lot of this fragmentation, I guess you would say, is that with good growth is that developers actually follow the infrastructure. And what I'm saying is, is what is happening is that all of a sudden John Doe buys, you know, 60 acres out there and he wants to develop that because the family decided to sell it. Well, the first thing they do is they come to us and say, "Well, I need water and I need sewer." Well, you know, then all of a sudden you got a spider web and you're drifting everything over here and the cost to do that is expensive. Where you need to grow your city from your core out. We need to be actually telling developers where those services are gonna be and let them develop from there, not telling us where we need to take our infrastructure. And so we're gonna be working on a plan. It's gonna take us some time, but looking at where the sewer's going, where we're gonna be extending water and hopefully have something that if a developer comes in, we could say, "Hey, this is gonna be done. This is a good place for you to develop on." So just to kind of give you an idea, 3% to 5% is what a good growth rate is. I know in Northwest Arkansas, it's going a lot faster than that. I know that the leaders want to see this area have a million people by when you and I turn 97. And, yeah, we're gonna be celebrating over in the seniors doing bingo, you and me, Larry. Well, let's get to it. Let me just say, I want to thank Zach and Cory and Ryan and Pat. You know, before they actually start the study, they need to know what we're looking at. So what you see in this study is, is first of all, you have the information on where our future roads are going, where our current roads are, where our future's going. And then also it includes our tenure plan. I don't know if you guys seen that, but we passed that in February, the 14th of our road plan. So they're utilizing that. On the public safety side, they get an inventory of what you currently have, what you protect, looking at expansion, you know, we've been talking about a new police station. And then also, it also talks about their equipment. So what input that we are giving them actually creates what you see before you tonight, okay? There's two key things that they do, and a lot of this is national stuff. Duncan Associates has been well-known, especially in the Southwest area, has done a lot of studies. I don't know how many studies he's done, but he's done a lot. So they're familiar with what those numbers need to be. But the typical one, if you look at table two, is talks about a level of service that's calculated as a transportation. As Tim and I talked about trips per day, this is more miles per day that they use. And then public safety, they use a figure of $1,790 as a net replacement cost. So that's a replacement of equipment as well as structure which would be built. So those are the two things that we have specifically. I thought the report was excellent. As you know, this is really built for, you can't use the money on the transportation side to do maintenance, which means you can't go out there and spend the money to repay Barrington. You can't do that. This money is for capacity. So it's the capacity, several projects we've got going on right now. Let's just take for instance, as you know, we got the grant to start on this Barrington and Henry de Tante Signal. As you know, that's kind of an area that's in, needs work. So that's a capacity thing. Just got too many vehicles in that area to be able to function properly. Clink and Henry de Tante is another one, or as you know, we're getting a signal light there, or hopefully we're gonna get a signal light there. But, you know, that's a capacity thing. Anything that has to do with increasing and assisting in capacity, these funds could be used on the transportation side. So if we're looking at Fletcher, that is capacity. If we're looking at Wildcat, that's a capacity. So those are the things that we'll be looking at specifically when it comes to transportation. And we utilize that future plan that we did for roads to target that. The second thing has to do with police and fire or your public safety. That could be used for land, that could be used for building, that could be used for equipment. And so, you know, fire trucks, as you see, there's replacement of fire trucks that Ryan had put in, some additional things for cars. So I want you to know what that can be used for. But it can't be used for any kind of operational type things for budgets or anything. So it's very critical. The second thing is that there are development credits that a developer can apply for. Let's take for instance, a good scenario. We have these apartments over here at Clink that were built. If we had impact fees, we find out that the impact fee is enough for that traffic light, then they would, they said, "We're gonna go ahead and pay for the traffic light." Then you would credit them for that, whatever that cost would be against whatever their impact fees. Then they would get credit for that. So one of the things that you're gonna see in our development side of things, when a subdivision comes into play, we will have a development agreement that will spell out whether they're going to be getting credits, what their fees are gonna be. Everything's gonna be lined out in that development agreement. Now, that development agreement will be actually part of the large scale as well as the subdivision reviews by the planning commission. And that will have to be in place before the planning commission actually approves that. The development agreement will actually come to the council for approval. So you all will know right up front what it is. A developer can come to you and petition and ask to reduce those fees or whatever. But there's things within that ordinance that basically will tell that. But there are specific things that they can do in what we're gonna do. We're gonna have a development agreement, I guarantee you. And it's gonna be spelled out on what everybody's responsibilities are. And so it's all in writing, the council approves that, and we go with that. So I want you to know that. There's a summary of the maximum fees, as you see, and the land use types, a single family, multifamily, retail and commercial. And there's actually in the fact here, actually describes what those are based on your land. I think it's there. Describes each one of those. Industry, warehouse, mini warehouse, and then public institution. And then you see the fees ironed out for transportation and then public safety, and those will be in separate, Pat will have to take care of all that. We're proposing the fees will be collected at a time of building permit. And we can go from there. I want to tell the council too, we currently have, because this is gonna be important on how you want to actually implement this. We currently have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. We have seven large-scale developments in some fashion of development. None of them have their building permit. As you know, most of these go out, they go and seek a loan with the bank. They know exactly what it costs to do development. They know exactly what it costs to build a building. And to be able to implement 100% for these buildings is gonna be disastrous. I'm just telling you. I mean, one of them would be close to $156,000. And so we gotta be careful about what we do here. And my recommendation is that we implement these at 25%, especially for the ones that we've seen right here. I mean, they're gonna be, they're gonna be at $70,000, 16, 18, $16,000. You know, their building permit's not typically not that big. But, and they, you know, they didn't know upfront when they started this process. So I don't think it's fair to them to get hit with 100% fees. But 25%, I think is a good starting point for all of us. And I'll take any questions or anything that you would want us to do.
I believe before we get any questions, are there any citizens that have any comments or questions? Please, sir.
Connor, 3, the Crafton Toll, 301 College. On behalf of Sam Mathias and Mathias Properties, just wanted to be on the record that they're opposed to the impact fees. And the main reason, I think, is mainly just the cost of them. I mean, those are pretty high numbers, especially on the multifamily and single family side. Taking the Mathias hat off of me, just as an engineer, I think this probably will deter some development in Tontown. That might be what you want, just kind of slow the growth. I think this is probably a decent way to do it. And not saying that you can't have them at all, but I think those are just fairly high, just in my opinion. But that's all. Thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone have questions? Mark, on the council here.
Hi. Well, I'll just follow up on that comment right there, because if you look at retail, commercial, 100% fees, if we were to institute them for 1,000 square feet here, $7,500. So, you know, 40,000 square foot, well, you're probably not gonna have retail, commercial, but assuming you had a mall-type situation, that's a pretty exorbitant price. When you compare that to Fayetteville, Benville is $1,153 per 1,000 square feet. Fayetteville's somewhere in that same ballpark. These are pretty high to go, I mean, I think that's kind of what you just said in your last comment to us. There was another thing in here that I really had a question about. Let me see if I can find this. Go to someone else and I'll come back if that's okay.
Yeah, just really quickly, just to clarify something that Mike just said. I did not hear you say that these impact fees seemed high. I heard you say these impact fees seemed reasonable. But for the seven that are currently in process, that it seemed a little high.
Well, they didn't know upfront. Typically, you should be able to tell them, by the way, you know, when we're in recon meetings, James will say, "By the way, your impact, we have water and sewer impact fees." And he gives them a copy of what it is. So, you know, they know upfront, but these people didn't know.
Correct. But you don't have a problem with the impact fees in general? That's what I heard of these, I just want to clarify that. Do you have a, do you think these impact fees are reasonable that come from the Duncan study? That we paid for, by the way. But that it's just not necessarily fair to the people that are in the process that didn't know before they walked in the door?
Well, you know, first of all, I don't necessarily like for a town to be compared to somebody else. The reason that these fees are probably a little bit higher than what you see in other communities is that we're growing a lot faster than they are.
And so therefore the impact is different here than the Fayetteville state.
Impact is much different from a capacity standpoint. I mean, you know, and the other thing is, is, you know, you go to Fayetteville, Benville, wherever you want to go, I mean, they have massive amounts of sales tax that they can contribute to their road infrastructure. We don't have that at all. And so, you know, it depends on what kind of community you want. Do you want a community that is somewhat outgrowing itself and just, you know, do what it's seen in the last 10 years? Or do you want much more manageable type growth that we can manage with the monies that we have than to just, you know? These fees probably could go down eventually. But right now, you know, you can get them reevaluated if that's necessary.
So you said in the very beginning of your comments, you said that 3% to 5% growth is normal and healthy? I don't know.
That's a good growth. That's a good, that's a good managed growth.
And what's our current growth in Tontown?
Well, I mean, you know, you had 2,400 in 2010. Your new population size 46, so figure that out. That's almost 100% in 10 years. So that's 10% per year. I think, looking at the amount of houses that have been built since the last census, and I think the census tells us that we have an average just a little under 3 people per home. So you could expect that we're well over 6,000 right now. So...
Since the last census. So we're over 10,000, you think? Or we will be once those are occupied?
Well, I don't know. I mean, the economy's got a lot of stuff, as you guys know. I mean, we only have, and I mentioned this again in our last meeting, was we only have less than 50 lots, single-family lots available in town. 50. So, you know, there's not a lot of subdivision development. A lot of it has to do with, although I tell you what, Veneto, you know, they got probably 60% built out there and they're selling houses and it just kind of amazes me, but...
So you don't want, to your comment about not wanting to be compared to other cities, and you brought up that they have the sales tax to basically fix their roads and do the maintenance. But you told us in your presentation that this impact fee would only go to the capacity as far as fixing or building out Fletcher, Wildcat, Stoplight.
Well, that's what, that was, that's...
Can't...
You're looking at your tenure plan that you guys passed on roads.
But this, this impact fee will not...
That's all included. That's how the, that's how the transportation number came about.
Can we use any of this money for maintenance on existing roads?
No, you can't use it on maintenance. It's capacity.
So we would still need to rely on the sales tax in order to generate some kind of funds to fix the roads we have?
Sure.
That, you know, we've got issues where they're too small and we can't get two cars down at the same time. So this helps us in no way, shape or form for those, but it'll help us with future roads that we're...
Yes.
You know, like Fletcher.
Trying to get, trying to get traffic so you don't have congestion on Barrington or you don't have congestion on Clink.
So it helps us on one end, but it doesn't really help us on the other.
Well, I would like to chime in and say, I think they are outrageously high. And I think it would do exactly what the gentleman back there said, and it would deter growth. Who wants to come in and pay? I did a little bit of math, and let's say, just based on these numbers right here, if a multifamily community, all these Highland Park over here, Highland Park, were to have to pay these, if these were in effect at that point, it would be over $1 million in impact fees based on this 100%. That warehouse on here, so there's 4, 40,000 square foot warehouses, $160,000 in impact fees at 150. I mean, you're just gonna have people walk away. I mean, it would change their decision to come here, to build here, to, "I'm for impact fees. We need impact fees, but we need reasonable impact fees." So I guess if the goal of impact fees is to stifle growth and keep businesses and developers from coming in, then that's what we would do. We would vote on 100% in my opinion.
So then maybe we, instead of doing a 25%, we do a 10%? I'm just trying to, you know...
Right.
Stifle that price and bring it down. So the study, it tells us to implement it at 25% and then 50%. If we did something, 10% maybe, that would help cushion the cost.
Well, also, you know, I think we all got an email, you know, just, did everybody get an email? From Tamara Martin?
I did.
So she brought up a really good point about multifamily warehouse and industrial doing a scalable fee schedule. I don't know how, what you want to call it. I, I don't know. I just typed one up just to give us an idea of what that would look like. So on, because just the way that it is is insane. That would, that would be the difference between someone walking away from a project altogether because it wouldn't make sense financially to pay those impact fees or something more reasonable. So, you know, just do a, to be scalable, multifamily, maybe you charge... So, you know, just do a, to be scalable, multifamily, maybe you charge the 25 or whatever's decided upon. Up to so many units. And then I put up to 25 units, you're paying the 25%. 26 to 50 units, you're halving that. And then 51 or more, you're halving that. So you're, you're scaling down. Same for industrial per 1,000 square feet. And same for warehouse. And I, I divided it up into 10,000 increments. So on industrial per 1,000 square foot, up to 10,000 square feet, you're paying the 25%. And then from 10,001 to 25,000 square feet on industrial, you're halving that, so scaling down, I guess in essence, 50%. And then again, 25,000 and larger. Same for warehouse, because, you know, paying that much for warehouse, they don't have, they're not going to be getting the revenue in warehouse. That, that's not bringing in money, but you're going to pay a ridiculous amount to build it. Nobody's going to do that. We're, we're, we're shooing businesses away for this, this amount.
Mr. Latham, what's the discernible positive impact to the city for every household?
I didn't hear that.
How, how, how do we determine what the, the positive impact for the city is per household? How do we determine that? Do we determine that off of taxes? Do we determine it off of something else?
Well, that's a good question. Can you find positive impact?
Well, I'm, I'm asking our planning guy, because my brain isn't seeing a positive impact every time we bring somebody new in. So an impact fee is the fee or, or the impact, what it costs the city to bring somebody in. So if the maximum impact of a single-family detached just on transportation and public safety is $5,796, and that's what it costs us as a city, but we don't charge $5,796 for them to come in, then it's like somebody coming into my house, doing a thousand dollars worth of damage, and I'm only going to charge him 100 bucks to fix it, or 250 bucks to fix it, right? So when I think through, and you and I had this discussion last July, and we look at what the tax revenue is, which is often an argument that I hear on the benefit of people coming in. The tax revenue that the city gets from an average house, a $500,000, $2,500 square foot house with about three people in it, is $430 a year. So I've got a wish list. You know, I want a million dollar fire truck. I, I want a new police station. I want a new firehouse on the west side of town. There's all sorts of things that I want. I want traffic signals. I want to give money to the historical museum. I want to grow that. I mean, there are things that I want to have happen. But when I go to Sam's, I can spend 100 bucks. That doesn't happen here. My wish list here, everything costs me a million dollars, right? So if I'm looking at, at what it takes to get a million dollars of a thing, I need 2,326 houses to get a million bucks at $430 in tax revenue. So I might be missing something, but it seems to me that we are willing to charge, the people who already live here, some of them since the 1800s, we're willing to increase their property taxes. We're willing to increase our sales taxes, which we've already seen has driven some people, some businesses out of town. But the one place, for whatever reason, we are white gloving and we don't charge anybody is developers. So if a developer comes in and we charge them $5,796, that they then roll into a 30-year mortgage for somebody who wants to move to town, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. When I see that the impact on the city, and we're just talking about public safety, getting cops here that are well-equipped and have cars and whatever, when there's an impact of bringing those people in, and that impact is on our roads and everything else that we see coming. You're, you mentioned earlier 10% growth per year. We haven't accounted for that in our roads and in our infrastructure. So yes, I completely understand that this might slow growth, and I don't know that that's necessarily good or bad. I'm completely agnostic on that. What I do care about is if we're going to grow, maybe we need to grow at 3% to 5% so we can keep up with it, but we are behind the eight ball. We need to do something to catch up. And I don't think charging 25% or 10% of the amount that Duncan Associates told us is the impact is the right way to handle that. Because the only other way to do it is to go after the people that already live here and increase their sales taxes and property taxes. I just don't think that's fair. So I understand it's not a positive approach. I don't have a problem with developers. I love developers. But I think we need developers who want the benefit of the city and who are willing to pay that impact, and again, pass it on in a mortgage. We are an attractive place to be. And if by some chance people don't want to do it right now, as you already pointed out, these impact fees can come down over time. But you guys know how much I hate being compared to Bentonville, Fayetteville, anybody else, because we are Tonton Town. And Tonton Town is different and should be different than anywhere else. Tonton Town has unique challenges that other places don't have. And Tonton Town has unique, wonderful qualities that other places don't have. And if a developer wants to come and build here, super duper. If people want to come live here, super duper. If businesses want to build here, super duper. But if every time they do that, they punch me in the nose, I'm a little less willing to do it. If every time they come in here, it costs me $5,796, and I've got to give the firemen what they need, and I want to, and I got to give the police what they need, and I want to, and I want to give the citizens what they need, and I want to. I just don't know how we can continue to take that impact out of our city, citizens that are already here, instead of the people that want to build here. So if I'm missing something, that's the question. If I'm missing something on the great benefit of bringing people in here, other than the $430 a year of tax revenue, please help me with that.
No, I, I've just, you know, it's kind of like, I just talked to the mayor. I said, you know, you've got an older couple that lives down on, on Clink Road that had a farm. I'm just speculating here, okay? And, you know, they could get in their car, they could drive and didn't, you know, could get on Henry de Tonte, 412. They could turn, they could do everything else, and then all of a sudden, what happens? You got apartments, you got this going up, you got all these subdivisions going up there. And the couple can't even get out of their driveway. Who's supposed to pay for that? They've been paying taxes, they've been doing all this stuff for many, many years. And then all of a sudden, yep, who's you pay for?
Let me, let me remind us that we also passed some, what I would consider higher sewer and water tap fees. So they wouldn't at the 100% be paying $5,796 to build a house. They would be paying, let me see, $10,078 because, you know, we passed $4,282 worth of water and sewer tap fees as well. So let's not forget, there are other tap, there are other fees as well. And to Tim's point, you know, we're assuming that a developer, I mean, Tim made a comment, I think, that said, you know, you can just roll these tap fees in, in the mortgage, but we're assuming a developer would be moving forward with these tap fees. And I think the answer to that would be no. So I, I don't think they would want to pay $10,078 per house in tap fees. I think this is nuts, to be honest with you.
But again, if there's a $10,000 or impact on the city, and we don't, like, it costs us $10,700 for you to move to town, but I'm only going to charge you 2,000, I think that's nuts.
I think the problem is, is I think these should have been implemented so long ago
Couldn't be more, absolutely.
That we are trying to sort of make up for it with much higher fees, which is going to shoot us in the foot. I just don't think it makes sense to do that. I think it's just going to stifle and stop us. And that's not, that's not what I think is best for Tonton Town, is to just stop all growth with really, really high tap fees. But, I mean, I think we all agree that we should have done this a long time ago. I just, I just can't, absolutely can't vote for 100% on this.
But we're not trying to. We have to. It's been so long. So on the seven, you know, on these folks, if we reduced that impact for these seven, I'm totally for that. They didn't know coming in. But going forward, I don't know how we can continue to have people come in to the great detriment of our citizens.
Yeah, I don't, I think it should, yeah.
Yeah. Sure, Mike. I don't have as much of a problem with the, the impact fees that are on the single-family detached. We know that the traffic brought in from those is, that's where you see a lot of trips, the mileage and all that kind of stuff. Where I think we're way off base on is the fees on the retail commercial, the office per 1,000 square feet. You get into a large number, and, you know, you made my point, and I've said this before up here. We're, we're 10, 15 years behind on these. And one thing that we got to consider too, and it's in this study, it's a direct quote under the legal framework. "The fundamental principle of impact fees rooted in both case law and norms of equity is that impact fees should not charge new development for a higher level of service than is currently provided to existing development." So if we're going to go and pile these on at the rate that we're looking at here, I think that's troublesome, just based on that statement. So, you know, I know that Mr. Ayton has looked at this, and he's written an ordinance that's probably in compliance with Arkansas statute and follows the study. I know it looks pretty similar to what we passed before on the other ones, but, I mean, these are, these are some reasonably high numbers.
Some of that, though, is just that we're not used to it. You know, in the town that, that I moved from, five years ago today, by the way, the impact fees there are, are $20,000 per single-family development. And, and that's a town that's grown. That's a town that already exists, and that's their current impact. In Oakland, California, there are areas that are $23,000. There are zones that are $28,000. I understand, it seems like a lot for us because the places around us haven't done that. But the world is different. Inflation has increased the cost of goods and services. The pandemic meant that we're not getting our hands on things quite as quickly as we did with the pandemic. I mean, look around. Your insurance rates are going up, your gas prices are going up, everything's going up. And the impact on the city is higher than when Duncan and Associates put this impact fee or study together for us initially, that again, we paid for them to do. So there is an impact on the city. You're right. We can't just find an arbitrary number. You're right. We can't just say, oh, well, we messed up before, we got to catch up now. This is the impact. This is the impact, like it or not, this is the impact. Yes, it might slow growth. That might be good. I can't control that. I don't think it will. But if we have an impact, I don't think the city should absorb that, and I don't think the city should pass it on to people who already live here. That's all.
I just want to remind everybody that whatever is voted on tonight, you know, we have the water and sewer tap fees that we talked about. So these aren't the only, these aren't the only tap fees. There, there's this other set of tap fees that are also.
And it's, it's a great point, but it's because there are impacts on that side, and there are impacts on this side. Total impact, as Amber rightly pointed out earlier, well over $10,000. For every time a new single-family house is built here, it costs us over $10,000. It costs our citizens over $10,000.
But wouldn't that mean that you'd have to raise the fees every year, commiserate with at least a cost of living adjustment? And we're not doing that. So, I mean, I'd like to speak to somebody that come up, who did this, and have them justify these numbers and what exactly they meant by them. Is that what it is in today's dollars, or are you projecting this cost out over the life of the person who's living here and the, and the time that the business is here? And we don't have that information here. It doesn't say that these are in $20, $24, this is what the impact is to your city. That's what we project this cost to be. I don't see that in here. I mean, I know.
I think it is in here, but I don't know where it is right there.
It may, it may be. It's a pretty lengthy thought.
Or it's like.
I may have missed it.
Maybe going back to a starting point, if you want to consider this, you know, Phillip wants to talk, he's been in development forever. Is look at implementing a 10% on the current projects that I just talked to you about, okay? And then anything above that, go to 25%. What's interesting is, and I know we were going to talk about the Veneto project, but just to give you a perspective on this, we got $265,000 from that project, okay? If you divide that into the 60 lots that are in there, that would be close to $4,500 per lot. So you've got almost 70% of that impact fee. So that's pretty good, just to teach you perspective. Phillip, do you want to say anything?
If I can be allowed to say.
Yeah.
Go ahead. What do you advise? Well, I appreciate you all letting me visit. I'd hate to be in your place right now, and, and I, I understand it. I've seen it happening for the last 15, 20 years in Tonton Town. I'm just telling you, I, I built 30 subdivisions. I built houses, hundreds of houses. I've never paid $5,000 impact fee. What I say, if you, if you, if it take, if that's the impact and what it costs the city, you're spending too much money on the wrong things. It's, it's, you know, what do you do? You quit writing checks and so you can cover them, or do you just keep spending the money the way you're spending it and charge everybody else more? I mean, I came out here probably three years ago. I'm not, I'm not upset about this. I know something's got to be done, you got to do something. I come out here, I'm on the highway commission. There's five commissioners in the state, and I deal with the whole state, but my emphasis is Washington Benton Counties. And, you know, the 412 bypass and the improvement, hopefully, before long on 412, 112 improvement, which is a huge deal, airport access road. And I came out here and I talked to whoever the mayor was in. I can't remember his name, but that doesn't matter. And I said, you can't keep funneling all this traffic to 412. You've got to put some connector roads in so everybody that gets in their car doesn't have to head to 412, which is pretty much what happens right now, you know? And he said, I said, he said, where do I get the money for that? If y'all give me the money for that, he's talking about the state highway commission. If we, if y'all give us the money, we'll put the roads on, in. I said, we can't, we can't build city streets, you know? I said, look at Don Tyson Boulevard in Springdale. We didn't give them a penny for that. Well, where'd they get the money? Well, I mean, that's the question he asked me, my own brother. I said, they passed, they passed a bond issue and have sent sales tax. And they did that. They did wagon wheel road. They did Huntsville Street all and out. And he said, well, we can't pass another bond. We just passed one for a $5 million fire station. And I said, well, maybe you should build a $3 million, $2 million fire station. Spend $3 million on roads. I mean, that's the way I have to do it in my business. I can't go out and, and just something, if there's something I want, just write a check for it. And, and, you know, the people that have been here haven't understood what it takes to spread things out and build a city, and now you're left dealing with it. You know, I've heard the phrase, how do you get out of the hole? Stop digging. That's the first thing you do. And, you know, I would suggest, you know, that you could put some of these fees on here to be able to pay with, for maybe them. here to be able to pay with for maybe the improvements that's needed, the impact that the new house today will, will impact the city. What you're asking, I mean, these people, the next, the next 10 years or probably a lot longer than that, they're paying for all these people that's come the last 10 years because they haven't paid anything, nothing. And so I think you have to be reasonable about it. I think you have to take it a step by step. And by the way, the city doesn't get any of the real estate taxes. Y'all don't assess taxes, you don't get a penny of it. Springdale School District gets 85% of those taxes. So y'all aren't the only ones there with your hands out, by the way, you know? So, and I, and I don't blame you. But you know, you have to balance this out where you get some from sales tax, they spend a little bit more, you get a little bit of that, you know? And you get a little impact fee and you, and you spend that, but you can't, in my opinion, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, I don't live here. I was born here and my parents were born here, my grandparents were born here. You know, I've got a piece of property out here that's been in the Taldo family for 100 years. And there's nothing that I'd rather see than, than Tawnytown being prosperous, but to try to kill it all at once like this for the sins of the, I say sins, they did the best they could, but I don't think it was wise decisions that they made. Maybe they spent too much running sewer line, big sewer lines out. Did you need all that at the same time? I don't know, maybe. But, but you have to be, you have to be prudent about it and you have to spread it out to keep a constant growth in the city because you do get something from that. You'd get, you'll get, you'll get sales tax, you'll have retail businesses that come in and, and maybe it's not a whole lot. But I don't think putting this impact fee on it is gonna draw harps out here to put a store over here on the Messino property across from Mama Z's, for instance. You know, so I'm not talking against impact fees and I'm, and I'm, I've always thought everybody ought to pay their own way, but I think it's just going overboard. And because, you know, that $10,000, y'all look at it, like you said, you know, well, the developer, if, if the developer builds the house and then he's gonna charge that impact fee $10,000 to the homeowner and then the homeowner's gonna get that loan and he's gonna make payments on that for 30 years. I mean, that, that's an impact, if you wanna talk about impact. I mean, that's a huge, huge amount of money and, and you get it one time. So it's my opinion, my humble opinion, because I trust all y'all, your heart's in the right place, you know, that you take it one step at a time and you go in, go in and pass something that's swallowable and you get people to go ahead and keep building out here. And then as it goes along and a year or two or three or whatever it is, you might have to raise an impact fee or you might get another bond paid off and you might wanna get a road bond. And I'm not comparing you to Springdale, but that's what they did, you know? And that sales tax comes in a lot quicker, even during, even during down times when nobody's building here, that sales tax is still gonna come in. You know, all of these people that are building here, and I'm sure y'all are aware of this, you know, they get a load of lumber out there and that sales tax goes to Tawnytown. That's a pretty good deal. How much are you wanting to lose on sales tax?
If, if, if it's coded correctly.
If it's coded correctly, if you're, if it's not, y'all have the right to challenge it and audit it and look at it. They did that in Springdale. They did that with Emerson Monument out there because, I mean, this is crazy, but you can go in and get a monument for a grave in Springdale, they're sitting there in Springdale using all the utilities and everything, but if they put it in their truck and haul it out here to St. Joseph's Cemetery, Tawnytown gets the sales tax on it. That's just the way it is. Same way with the lumber. I'm, I'm not gonna preach, I'm just saying, I just wanted you to know that, that I think there's other ways and I think that this is one way, but I think it's, I think it's a little bit too much. Thank you.
Mr. Taldo, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I know that you, I know your, your heart is here in Tawnytown because you were raised here, you lived here. So, and I know that you also have, are a developer.
I am.
In your opinion, how much of a percentage of this do you think is completely fair to start out with?
I've never paid $5,000 and you're already getting $3,000 on sewer tabs.
So do you think it should be 25%, 50%, 7%, 10%?
You know, that might be, I don't, just looking at it, and I'm just pulling this out of the air, you know, 25% sounds reasonable, you know? Because not so much that, that, that you don't need more, but you already got that big water and sewer.
Yes, sir.
Thing. And that's a, that's a big deal. And you all put water and sewer in ahead of the growth. I, I, that's what it looks like to me. And, and what Springdale would do, you know, they're not gonna go out there and, just like you said, they're, they're not gonna go out there and then you decide that you want something a mile from the sewer and put sewer out there to it. You gotta pay for that or you wait until it gets there, you know? And that, that's my piece and I'll, I'm gonna live with whatever you do, but I don't think you have to do it all at one time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, no disrespect to anybody, but I, I think if we start asking the kids if they wanna do homework, most of the time they're gonna say no, homework's awful. I, I, we've hired Duncan Associates, presumably because Duncan Associates are the people who can give us the answer to what the impact is. So if we've paid any money to these people, then what they say needs to mean something or we've wasted more city money, to Mr. Taldo's point. I could not agree more, Mr. Taldo, that we need to be careful about the money we're spending. I could not agree more. I think for years and years and years, we have not been great stewards of the money and I think we need to be and we're trying to be. I think this council has proven that, that again, our hearts are in the right place and we're trying. But we have paid Duncan Associates to tell us what the impact is. If they're wrong, then we need to sue them and get our money back. If they're not wrong, then I think we need to take their advice and not give it 10%, 25%, 50%, 75%, but 100%. I understand 100%. I'm in the minority here and perhaps I'm just being simple minded here. I don't think I am. I think I'm looking at the impact. If the impact is $10,000 or whatever it happens to be, that's the impact. If they are wrong, then we need to get our money back or we need to bring them up here to explain, as Mike pointed out, where'd you come up with these numbers and why? So I could, without reservation, table this until we get a chance to talk to them, but I absolutely cannot, in good conscience, vote for anything less than 100% of a, of an impact fee that we paid for the study and here it is in front of us.
Let me, let me read this one.
I would like to.
Yeah, man. Please.
I would like for you to look at page two. It says the city could adopt the fees at less than the maximum amount.
Right.
And then increase it, you know, as we go. So.
Of course we could, but they've said this is the impact. So I get their point, but, and yes, we could do that. And, and, and to their point, they say 50, 75, 100, we're talking about 10 and 25.
Correct. Well, what I was thinking is to phase it in. If we phased it in, if we started at 25, then we could go to 50 and we could put it in there in a certain amount of time.
I understand the argument.
January of 2025, February, I mean, January of 2026.
I absolutely understand the argument.
I feel like we should phase it in and that's just my.
No, I, I, I absolutely understand, but again, if every time somebody builds here, it costs us money, why do we only take back 50% or 75%? Why would we keep losing money? And yes, I understand it may slow some growth for a time. I understand there are people at Mr. Taldo who have never paid that, okay, but just because you never have it, doesn't mean that that's not the way that things are today. You know, I never paid for $3 gas till I paid for $3 gas.
I'm sorry, I. Well, it kinda goes along with what you said. Right here above the table, it says these represent the maximum fees the city could adopt.
Yep.
Based on the data. So I just.
I understand. I, I get where you guys are coming from and I'm not mad at you, I understand your opinions, absolutely 100% and hopefully you understand mine.
Mike, if I remember correctly, weren't they gonna charge us $2,000 to appear by Zoom to discuss the water and sewer impact fee rates? So you know, I, I would suggest the next time we do one of these that they must come justify their, at the very least, because I think we paid a pretty good penny for this, at the very least, do at least one Zoom with us. Yeah, there's no way on earth I'm voting for 100%. And I still think that retail and office are exorbitantly high and when you're talking about 1,000 square feet with a total of 7,500 per 1,000 square feet for retail and office. Industrial seems a little bit more reasonable, but anyway, I think y'all know where I stand.
What if we made a copy of this?
You know, I just, I think if we pass this at 100, we're, we're killing development here, you know, we're, we're gonna stop the residential, we're gonna stop commercial, you're gonna, you're gonna scrape the brakes on a lot of things. I know right now, commercial, you know, the lease a spot is $14 a square foot. Some of these buildings, there's a, there's a Matthias building that's over by Fletcher, 20,000 square foot, 14, $14 a square foot, that's 20,000 a month. They're just gonna pass this on, they're gonna raise the rents on those, you know? It's just a snowball effect. So this is a tough thing to, to try and implement and it sounds like we're having, we have different takes on whether we go 10%, 25% and 100%. We gotta start somewhere, but it's a big.
Just, they're making copies of just that scale down that I came up with, which anybody can change, but just so you can see it in front of you, they're gonna bring you a copy in case that's something that you guys would like to consider for multifamily warehouse and industrial.
I just wanna say that we're trying to bring businesses here to support all these houses and rooftops that we've brought in and that's one of the highest ones on here. It's gonna give them one more reason not to come to Tawnytown and we're trying to get the businesses here and I think we really have to take that into effect on how we get the businesses here because we want them here to support our rooftops. We probably do rooftops and then they go to the sales tax in another town because we don't have what they need here. And I know we don't wanna be inundated with businesses, we want it to be the right mix for us, but I think this kinda impact fee just completely shuts us down completely and that is not what we want as a city.
So I asked the council, do we feel like we're, we're growing too fast? Do we need to stop, stop the growth?
I don't think it should shut 100% and I think if we chose 100%, it would stop 100%.
Well, we've heard Mark say, I mean, we've, we've only got 50 residential lots that are, I mean, I know there's acreage out there, but we've taken R4 off the table, we've taken multifamily off the table. It doesn't matter if you put them at 2,000%, if nobody's building a house here, you ain't gonna make it down.
Right, that's exactly right.
So, you know, it's, that's just another thing to consider in all this stuff.
How many houses are being built right now? Do we know that? You sure?
Yes.
I don't know, we're averaging somewhere between 250 and 280.
Per year? And that was the same last year, I suppose?
It's slowing down, no question about it. I mean, you know.
And there are lots of factors.
I mean, how many, how many families today, you know, it's, it's difficult. I mean, you know, rent's high and everything else and you know, not even $110,000, you know, a year of family income in order to be able to afford a house.
So if, if we're building at 250 a year, then 750 people a town a year, here's, I mean, here's what I don't want. I don't want us to get $0, right? I, I think that's silly, we're already getting $0, we better get something. Yeah, we nailed it. So we need to find a way to bring in some money. Danny, to answer your question, you know, I, I don't want growth to stop, but if we could get back in a time machine and grow at 3%, I think that would've been awesome or grow at 5%, I think that'd be awesome. I think 10% growth per year has caused a lot of the problems that we're having right now with roads. And you know, I say it a lot, the average household has nine to 11 trips, 10 trips per day on the roads. This talks in terms of miles, 192,000 road miles per year total with, with what we currently have. And, and when a road, I mean, how much of a road costs a million dollars? If you don't get much road for a million bucks, Mr. Taldo could probably.
I'm gonna tell you right now, the Springdale bypass, 4 foot bypass is costing $40 million a mile.
$40 million a mile.
$40 million a mile to put that in our way and we're gonna, we're gonna do a groundbreaking December roll if y'all come out and watch it.
Sounds great.
$40 million a mile.
It sounded like you said.
Is that land acquisition in? Is that land acquisition, the whole nine yards?
Is that what?
Land acquisition.
Yes.
So Danny, to your point, no, I don't want growth to stop. Misty, to your point, I don't want there to be no businesses here to support the people who live here and to bring us sales taxes. That's not what I want, but as we've been bringing in hundreds, thousands of people just since the last census, we have a problem with our roads, as you may have noticed. We, we all see it all the time, just go down 412, it's problematic. And that problem is going to be significantly worse six months from now and eight months from now and 10 months from now and 12 months from now than it is today. So perhaps a little bit of slowing isn't terrible if it allows us to catch up. That's not what I want, but if it allows us to catch up, then I think that's helpful. You know, to Mr. Latham's point, when you know, mom and pop, Arda Mani, let's say, I'm not picking any of you in particular, can't get out of the driveway because of all the people, well, I mean, they've been here since the 1890s, right? I mean, they've, they've paid their taxes, they've done their part and I, I can compromise with you because I don't want $0, but I think the point needs to be, we've paid for a study, we know what the impact is and I would love for us to get 100% of our impact back. I feel like every step we take forward, we take 10 steps back, but if we can take three steps forward or three steps back for every 10 forward and then five and then eight and then we're. then five, and then eight, and then we're even, I can get behind that. But I need I need somebody to to put something out there. And I don't think saying it's ten percent forever of these fees, or it's twenty-five percent forever of these fees. We've we've got to get somewhere. And Mr. Toldo, you're right, there are some ways to raise money. Property tax is a way. Sales tax is a way. I don't think property tax is a great way for us to raise money. Well, we can raise village in the city. I don't think we.
The county raises the village.
And and we have the opportunity, once a year, we do that here as well. But if we're going to raise sales taxes, where do we go? Sales taxes here are really high, e- even comparably to Springdale. So it, I I again, I mean, I'm just, there are ways to get money. I don't want to nail the people that are already here. I don't, I mean, I know you don't live here anymore, but your family's been here, Mr. Toldo, since the eighteen nineties?
Yes.
I don't think it's fair to to impact a Toldo who's not building here.
Can I tell you why I don't live here?
Sure, I'd love to know.
Whenever we got married in nineteen seventy-two, there wasn't houses in Tony Town that a newlywed couple could get into. There was no construction here. There was nothing. There was no small houses for a young couple. We had to go into town and rent an apartment. I call that town into town, you know? And everybody for generations that grew up here, a big part of them, moved out because they couldn't find a place. You know, and can I make one point? And and this is probably not.
Ask him, not me.
I make one point, Philip. I just want to say, you know, sometimes you need to look what's right into your nose. And I was looking at this, and forty percent of what you have here is not going for roads. Nobody said a word about this. Nobody. I mean, is that something you need to talk about? I mean, twenty-four hundred dollars a house for public safety? I'm all for police and fire departments, but I'm just saying, this might be a time that you might say, well, that might be too big of a percentage. I don't know if it is or not. But we do know that there is a problem with roads.
I I was just going to offer a kind of a counterpoint to that. The I think the public safety transportation kind of tie hand in hand, and we need one to have the other. So maybe they split it out that way, but, you know, we could probably see more efficiency in the area of public safety with better transportation routes.
And there are national numbers on that, too.
I'm sorry, that just jumped out at me when I saw that. We've taught nothing but but roads, and forty percent of it's going somewhere else.
Well, thirty-three ninety-seven here would go to transportation, twenty-three ninety-nine to public safety. Is it okay if we ask you a couple of questions?
I see. I'm glad you.
What are the national numbers on public safety? How how many police officers per capita, for instance? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we've had this discussion.
The last average that I looked at was per thousand, you're anywhere from one point nine to two point three is kind of the average that you look at.
So if we're growing by a thousand people, we need to add another three police officers? Plus cars, vests, guns?
That's one way to look at it, but that, I mean, what I try to do is look up at at what we're doing throughout the year, what our calls for service are, how many times somebody is requesting us. That that average, to me, I factor in the area that we cover, the, you know, if we had half of the the square miles that the city is, then we wouldn't need as many, you know? But if the population stays the same and we have half the square miles, then maybe that changes. So there's, to me, a lot that goes into it more so than just the average, you know, like cities that have, Great Grove has more population than us, and they have a few more officers, but they're also half of the area that we patrol.
You have seemed to me over the years that we've had a chance to work with each other to be relatively conservative when it comes to spending money, which I appreciate. Thank you. But how, about how much is it to bring on one new police officer for the first year? About how much does that cost the city?
I mean, the the high end of that, you're looking at the salary for a police officer plus benefits, you're in roughly seventy thousand.
But what else has to go into that?
You're going to be about, say, seven thousand to equip and outfit them with uniform and equipment plus a vehicle. That can be sixty to eighty thousand if you don't have that. So, I mean, the cost, it starts stacking.
You think a fair estimate's a hundred and fifty thousand?
That's reasonable.
So the three police officers cost roughly half a million dollars?
With everything combined, if you've got to buy brand-new equipment, things like that, yes.
Okay, so let's call it four hundred and fifty thousand, just for the sake of argument. That four hundred and thirty dollars that we receive in in property tax that the city gets, that would mean we need to put a thousand houses here, thousand forty-six, at roughly three people per house, that's another thirty-one, what, three thousand one hundred and thirty-nine people in town, which means that we need to put in more cops, right? And and it just grows and grows and grows, and that's, I mean, that's for a police officer. So again, I I'm not trying to thwart growth, but if we think through what's happening, Mr. Toldo's right, I've got nine children. I don't want my kids to go move to Farmington, right, or wherever. I want my kids to be in Tony Town. My kids want to be in Tony Town. And yes, there's some some cost that has to go into that a little bit. It's hard for a young person to do that. But we are way behind the eight ball. I think you're right. I think those behind me for us have done the best they know how. And I think we can do a little better. I think what we know how, because of technology, because of various things that we can look at, we're looking at computer screens right in front of us with an impact fee that we paid for from Duncan Associates out of Austin, Texas. I mean, there's something here that allows us to act differently. Maybe I'm totally wrong. I'm I'm willing to admit that. But we've paid an expert to give us an answer to a question that we've had, and we have to decide what we do with that information, which brings us to what do we do with that information?
I have a quick question. So if, since we're talking this through, I I passed this out. Does anyone, it kind of cut off on the edge there to the right of total, the top number on each category, just to make this very clear, is basing that off of twenty-five percent of that total number. So so, for example, on multifamily, the the, this is twenty-five percent of four thousand three hundred and sixty-five, and then it it didn't print this next column, but below that is decreases by fifty and decreases by fifty. What do y'all even think about that? If we're talking about.
Where did you get these numbers, Amber?
Just the top of my head, just trying, just just thinking through how to make, because these don't make sense, the the warehouse, industrial, multifamily, to me, is 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 very ridiculous. So I was just trying to think of a way to scale that down as they build larger and larger.
But but on the on the multi-use, for instance, the, I'm sorry, multifamily.
All this can be changed. It's just a number, I just.
Oh, so you started at twenty-five percent?
Up to twenty-five units, you know, would be twenty-five percent, twenty-six to fifty would be fifty percent of that, fifty-one or more units would be fifty percent of that. That's how that scaled down. Same for industrial and warehouse. This is just a starting point. This is just to put something out there if we were voting on this tonight, to not just, because even twenty-five percent of these numbers, just leaving them as is, I think is too much, but that's just my opinion.
Well, I I appreciate the math, I appreciate you putting that in front of us, but then but then why? I mean, does it, does it stay there? Because again, we don't have twenty-five percent of the impact, we're only getting twenty-five percent of the cost of the impact.
Can always, can always be changed. If if these ever increased, this could always increase, but this is just a starting point. This is just because I thought even at twenty-five percent, these three categories still, to me, were higher. So it's just a way of breaking that down to a more reasonable impact fee, in my opinion.
Well, I I would really like to see where they get these numbers because I I understand we can look at it and say, wow, that seems really, really high. But I hate to keep coming back to it. We paid for a report, presumably they've done their job, they've done the right thing, they know, they know what to look at. If not, I mean, I I don't know who commissioned the study in the first place. I vaguely remember voting on it back in a previous mayor's administration, I can't remember the guy's name either. But I I remember hiring them to do this, and I know that we paid them to do it, I know that they've delivered on what we've asked them to do, but instead of us just saying, boy, that seems really high, you know, i- if I go to the store and they want, twenty-eight dollars for a candy bar, I don't have to pay twenty-eight dollars for a candy bar. But if that's the going rate, that's the going rate. I just, I I don't know. May I?
Better workshop.
May I follow up on?
Mike, go ahead, then I'm going to invite a couple of people to the.
I think I mentioned something about the the cost of living adjustments. It's in the ordinance, actually. The fees will be adjusted annually to account for the cost of inflation. So just correct myself.
And Grant? I believe you have a question, comment, concern, please, sir. And then, Mr. Board, someone asks you a question, if you don't care.
My name's Grant Siemens, twelve seventy-eight Piazza Road. I had no intentions of speaking tonight, but in listening to to the discussion on this, I keep going back to the to the slide that's on the screen there. And I think to, in my mind at least, to try to accomplish both objectives of continuing manageable growth, but having revenue that helps to offset the the needs to supply the infrastructure. And listening to the discussions, to me, I I can see no other way than to develop some type of a scalable plan or something that, you know, puts up to a dollar amount and then a cap on that. I haven't, of course, had thought of even look or wasn't even aware of this particular study, but the slide that's up there, what 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 keeps coming to my mind is I see the potential transportation, public safety impact fees calculated in this study or summarized during this table. They represent the maximum fees the city could adopt. I look at this as being a best-case scenario if it was all a bit of roses and and everybody had unlimited, you know, space in their pockets to empty them out. But I look at this as being a a best-case scenario or suggestion and not a hard rule of you must do this. I think we need to look at doing this on a scalable, doable thing that benefits the city as well as those trying to develop. And to understand that this was their potential projection that they tried to set this thing.
Thank you, sir. I have one question for you, Kevin. As a, as a real estate man and as a an occasional builder, what do you think numbers like this would? You're not, you're not planning. I'm asking a citizen.
Six ninety-nine West Bank revenue. Oh, I mean, it's going to have an impact. I mean, it's going to be a pass-through, is what it all ends up going. So any time you have a house, you're selling it, it gets appraised by an appraiser. Appraiser looks at the surrounding houses that are being sold, and, I mean, if you if you've got it listed for two hundred and ten a square foot, and the other houses in the area are only going for two hundred and five, you're probably not going to be able to get two ten for it. As far as that that impact, I mean, it's a big impact. Where does the, where does the money that is associated off the build go? So as a builder, when we pay for the product to come in, it's not just the product, it's not on the labor piece of it, so let's just average two hundred thousand dollars a build on material. So you're talking, what's our, what's our sales tax? Would you say ten percent? So twenty thousand dollars during the build of a house, where does that twenty thousand dollars go to? On top of the ten thousand dollar impact fee, it goes back to the city. So I mean, it's it's going to be, there's going to be a, there's going to be a shift. There will be a shift as far as the builders. The developers have their piece, but when it comes to the the builders, the builders have their impact fees that they're having to pay. The developers are really not paying those impact fees. It's the actual builder that gets into the impact fees of it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's. I I like the, I like the mayor's compromise. Can we get behind that, twenty-five, fifty, a hundred? And Amber, I know you're okay with the twenty-five percent?
I don't like the, I don't like the scaling up every year. I think that's totally pointless. I mean, not pointless, that sounded right. What I think that it, I I think it's basically, it goes against our whole point. I mean, scaling it up every year, another twenty-five percent is going to do the same thing, it's going to deter the growth.
So you don't, so you don't like the mayor's twenty-five, fifty, a hundred? I I could get behind that one, okay. So we're a little further from each other than I thought, if that's okay?
Okay.
Can I talk?
Talk away.
May I propose a workshop?
Well, that was, that was just one of my, you know, an idea to help compromise. So could we maybe go two years?
What if we just put it in there that we're going to reevaluate every year? Like start with twenty-five percent, and then we reevaluate, look at what the numbers are, look what everything's coming in at, see how it impacted us?
That, I think that is a great idea.
I mean, all of this can be, I mean, it's a coordinate, we're we're voting on it, so I mean, we just vote on it again.
Well, we, we may not ever vote on it ever again.
We may not, that's correct.
That's correct, but the council will vote on it.
As a council, somebody will vote on it at some point. Yes, sir.
Just want to mention, too, I mentioned about seven projects going on right now. My recommendation was ten percent. Hopefully you'll consider that. And the other thing is, is that there's an appeal process. So if you have a large developer come in specifically and they don't feel like these fees are adequate, so they can come and appeal that to you all, and you can discuss that determined, like Mike was talking about, you know, regarding the retail, they can still come and and talk to you all and see if that's something that they want to do. So there's also, there's appeal process here that they could take into account.
I have, I have a compromise. Those of you that know me, you're going to know how hard this is for me, all right? I can get behind what Mark said, ten percent on the existing seven, twenty-five percent, let's go out to, I'm willing to go as far as three years, fifty percent for three, get to a hundred percent. That puts us out nearly a decade from now. It means it doesn't have to come back here, we've got something that's down, developers know that it's coming. Danny Shing said no.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. You know what? I think back to our last meeting where we discovered that a developer, you know, took a trade for not extending Spinoto out and widening Monagani, and they found a workaround and and, you know, now he's telling us that they can appeal this, you're going to have some big developers come or builders, you know, if they buy into a subdivision, that's the builders that are building this this impact fee, right? You're going, they're going to have some deep pockets, and they're going to find a way to appeal this.
But that's not a legal appeal, that's appealed to the council, is that correct? So they come back to the council, they ask the council, the council can make that.
I kind of go, when I think about what I would vote with, I like the twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred.
Twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred. So the next four years, it goes from twenty-five to fifty to seventy-five to a hundred, is that correct? I'm willing to make a motion on that if you are.
It's just too fast, it's too fast.
Well.
Well, then you got that. Then you got the seven, you know, but.
I just like.
We could do the ten.
I like Misty's idea of reevaluating every year. If it's just something that can be on the docket, reevaluate, see where we are, see the impact, and go from there.
That sounded like a plan.
Because as we know, everything changes. I mean, look at our rates, the economy can take, inflation, we could have two thousand and eight, I mean, there's all kinds of things that can happen.
I I really dislike, I don't want to say hate, because that sounds strong, I really dislike the idea of looking at it again every year. Again, we've got numbers right here that tell us what we're up against. If instead, like Danny, I know you don't like. If instead, like Danny, I know you don't like the four years, again, I can propose it out to ten. Everybody gets to see what's coming. Everybody gets to decide what they wanna do. Instead of us, year by year, going, well, maybe they were right and maybe that new impact fee isn't ten thousand dollars, it's fifteen thousand dollars, it's twenty thousand dollars.
But I think we'll have real informa-, I mean, live information.
We have real information.
Well, I'm talking about how the, the twenty-five percent affected us. Did we see a major downturn? Did we see, did we see, you know, everything just stay, everything was the same, was stabilized? Businesses came, everything grew. Did it stifle it? I don't know. I just, I think a yearly assessment would be.
But we can misread the wrong tea leaves.
Well, especially like this first year. I mean, we just put these water and sewer impact fees in and now we're adding this impact fee. I really think we need to give it a year to see how it impacts us as a city and how it develops our growth.
So hypothetically speaking, if we did the twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, and let's say we did the twenty-five and we saw we shot ourselves in the foot, how hard would it be to come back and adjust the, adjust these impacts after we saw that? You know, or the council that's here at the time?
If you could do that anytime, can't you? Is there?
So what would be the problem? We'll do in the twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five and then we see, oh, we shot ourselves in the foot and that council brings it back and they scale it down at that time. I mean, what's gonna stop us from doing that versus assessing it every year? I think they do the same, we can do the same thing.
We, we get, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Danny. We get reports monthly at our city council meeting from, you know, we see the dollars that, that are, that are coming in. So we, we will, not necessarily in real time, but, you know, those will come in, so we can probably evaluate it pretty quickly. And so I, I think it's reasonable to just start with the number and not lock in, we're, we're going to fifty next year, seventy-five the year after that, and a hundred the year after that. I just, 'cause if we do that and you're, you're seeing not negative growth, but zero growth when you implement the twenty-five, and you're already pot committed to a hundred percent fees before down, before you're down the road, it's gonna be hard to put the toothpaste back in the tube, as they say. I think. I may be wrong.
Well, if they're already done, if they're already not growing it, if we're already not stopping, if we're stopping at twenty-five percent, like you said, Mike, people looking ahead and planning out, because people don't just plan their build tomorrow, they're building out five, ten years.
Right.
If they see that coming, they're gonna bypass us completely. They're not gonna plan here at all.
Very possible.
So like you had mentioned, um, just going back to the scalability, uh, just scaling those three things, what are your thoughts on that? You mentioned that you thought specifically, I think, warehouse or industrial or what was it, multifac-, one of those.
Oh, yeah, I mean, your, your numbers, since we see that, um.
They don't have to be, that's just a starting point.
Yeah, but they look a lot better than what's, uh, obviously, I, I can't get on board with what we got in the study. It's way too high. Um, the only thing maybe you change is, uh, uh, the amount of square feet. Yeah, I, I, 'cause Mark probably has a better idea, Mark and Brad probably have a better idea than the amount of square footage that's being talked about. And these, these ones that we got, the seven that we got, um, and it may have been on that sheet, I don't even know where it is now. Uh, but what kind of square footage are we talking about for, for those seven?
I think on that chart, there's some.
I've probably made.
Vapor Maven is eighty thousand, Mini Storage is ninety thousand, Old Oak is seventy-five. Then we've got some missing numbers and we've got Mathias at one-sixty.
Do you see that square footage?
Okay, well, yeah, okay, so you, you gotta recover.
You're, you're talking about the, the sheet of seven, right?
Yeah. Vapor Maven will have twenty-seven thousand of real.
Retail.
And Warehouse, thirty-one thousand. So if you basically gave them a, a ten percent on that, that'd be about twenty-eight thousand. The Mini Storage would be about sixty-eight hundred.
Yeah.
Old Oak would be seventy-three, thirty-five. Joe Bumper, sixty-five hundred. Bruce Landing, fifty-six, seventy-seven, and Mathias would be fifteen thousand.
Gotcha.
So what do you think about upping the square footage, uh, minimum on the fees and going to something? I, you know, we got the Fayetteville and Fayetteville numbers, but maybe something more realistic for us would've been like Silo, Gentry, uh, you know, things like that to, to see what their fees are. Uh, but, uh, I saw where Fayetteville, they don't start calculating, it's five thousand or less or five thousand or greater. So, I mean, obviously that affects the numbers that, that we get, but, um, I, I, I'm, I'm at the point of, I'm almost ready to say, let's just table this. We could, we could discuss this thing for hours more. Uh, I know everybody wants to get something on the table, get something, I know we've got a scheduled meeting.
The other thing is.
Looking at the decision, I don't know that we're ready to vote on it, quite frankly.
We would miss out on some of these, right? If we tabled this, we're gonna miss out on some impact fees of, which one did you say today? Which one is the most pressing?
Well, I mean, they're all in different stages. As you know, Vapor Maven's out there by Venetian.
Right.
Um, you know, I don't know when they'll be actually getting their building permit. They still got a lot of work out there. The Mini Storage, um, they're probably pretty close to getting a building permit. Um, Old Oak, um, they got their grading permit, so they've still got some work out there. Joe Bumper's is, is probably gonna be, if you guys seen it, I mean, they've got their whole thing ready to roll here. So I would think that they would be coming in, get a building permit. Bruce Landing is a long one, both them and Mathias are, uh, Mathias hasn't come through the large scale development yet for the planning commission. I think they're planning on it next month, so.
I just hate to table this.
Yeah, it's, it's maybe not a good idea, but.
I feel like the majority, I feel, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna assume, but it sounds like, um, I don't know, why don't, why don't you ask Larry, just kinda go down the line of where.
Okay. I will informally ask what, you know, not by any, by any stretch of the imagination, what, what is your thought? Danny? Twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred in four years or twenty-five and then step back, look at it?
Um.
Implement it tonight?
I mean, I'm still okay with the twenty-five, doing the ten for these existing seven, twenty-five, seventy-five, or twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred.
In the next four years or ten years?
If you wanna space it out in ten-year increments, that's something I'd, I'd think about, but I, I don't know. I don't know what we'd do those in.
Ten-year increments?
Do you do two, two years of twenty-five, two years of fifty?
Okay. Gotcha.
You know, basically.
Stretch that thing out, but.
What about the, just those three?
The scaling on the sheet that you've given us, I don't know if I like the square footage or the fifty percent deduction, maybe a twenty-five percent, or a twenty-five percent deduction in increasing that square footage a little. Um, just to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that would, I, I could work with something like that. I think fifty's a little bit of a drastic cut.
You think maybe getting rid of the bottom line and just making it two categories instead of three?
That, that might look more appealing.
What do y'all think?
And the square footage, maybe?
So then what are y'all thinking on the square footage?
Now, alls I heard was I got asked, nobody else got asked.
Well, so, okay. Misty, Misty, what are your thoughts on this?
I'm, I'm, I'm good with the twenty-five percent, um, with the planning aspects of development and how much it could impact us by trying to go ahead and lock stuff in. I feel like we really need to evaluate with the water and sewer impact in this and see where we land in a year. And I'm okay with the scaling as long as we can get the percentage. I think cutting it fifty percent may be a little much, um, but I think the scaling could work with the right numbers.
So you wanna do the ten percent on the existing?
Oh, I'm good with ten percent on the existing seven, yes.
Okay. I don't wanna table if we can avoid it.
Yeah, I don't either.
Understood. Amber?
I agree. Um, I, I would be okay with twenty-five percent with evaluating it year after year, just seeing where we are and what the current impact is and, um, just looking at our numbers monthly that come in. As far as the scalability, um, if we changed it to categories, we could do per a thousand square foot, uh, um, basically up to twenty-five thousand and then anything twenty-five, twenty-five thousand and one and larger. Could be an option. Any number is fine. And then the same thing for the warehouse. Those are the.
Mike?
Fuck process. Okay. Um, yeah, I'm good with the ten percent. Um, uh, twenty-five percent right now, um, I still don't know where I stand on the, the, this right here. I, I like it, uh, what, better than what we got here.
Do you have another thought?
No, unless you just eliminated the thousand and just made it up to ten thousand and ten thousand or greater, something like that, whatever.
They were talking twenty-five and that's twenty-five and then twenty-five.
Two categories versus three.
Is that what you read?
And however that lines out, I'm good with whatever the majority of us decide on that. I think two categories instead of three would be fine. Um, and then I think we have to, we can't lock in, uh, we're gonna do X, Y, and Z in the next four, eight, ten, twelve years, whatever it is. I think this is something, uh, I mean, it's a pretty drastic change for us, obviously something that we haven't done. Uh, so I think we'd need to, whether it's us or it's a different city council, that is gonna have to reevaluate it in a year and see what they wanna do. I mean, we already know that they're gonna get the cost of living increase in the fees per the ordinance, um, so it's gonna go up regardless of what we do. Um, but I hope I've made myself clear.
Clear as mud.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my head's mush right now.
Mr. Bortz?
Well, um, a- again, I, I appreciate everybody's viewpoint, um, but I, I, I think that we're making decisions based on what seems prudent from what we know. And for many of us, we don't know this. I mean, some of us have impact to building in a way that others of us don't. Um, and there are people that we are working with in the city who we like as developers, people we care about, people we've got relationships with. But I really struggle with this idea that we keep thinking, well, it seems too whatever. It seems too big, it seems, seems too much, it seems too harsh, but we didn't make this decision. We didn't make this decision. We hired somebody to look at the impact piece. Uh, to the gentleman's point earlier, yes, these do say maximum, uh, they do say maximum. But it says over and over in this impact study, this is what's happening now. This is what's happening with what we have now. So if we do ten percent for the existing seven, I'm totally fine with that. We've been talking about this for years, they've known that too, but yes, I'm totally fine with saying ten percent. I like the mayor's idea of twenty-five, fifty, a hundred. I like Danny's idea of better of twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred. Um, if we say every year, we're gonna come back to our limited viewpoint or our viewpoint of, of what we think is appropriate, then every year, we're gonna have this discussion over and over again. So we have an impact fee study. It's either worth the money we paid for it or it's complete garbage. And tonight, we're treating it like it's not worth the money we paid for it. That may be true. I don't know. But we paid them to do an impact fee study of the impact fees on the city of Tawny Town, Arkansas. These are the answers. Yes, there's this water impact fee that we just voted for. We just voted for it. That shouldn't be a shock to anybody sitting on the dais tonight. What we choose to do next, I understand. I, I'm, I'm, I'm here, man, I'm, I'm trying to accommodate. Um, I'm, I'm trying to compromise, but I'm, I, I already don't like it. And I've put together an idea of, hey, here's a decade, here's a decade out. Everybody gets to see what's coming. I can get behind most of it. What I can't get behind is twenty-five percent and we're done. I can't get behind, let's think about it every year. I mean, we've gotta have something here. And a dollar's better than no dollars. Absolutely agree. But I don't think we can keep coming back to this year over year over year over year. There is an impact. This is right or it's wrong, I don't know, but there is an impact. And right now, we're making zero dollars on the impact. According to this study, every time a new house is built, it costs us five thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars that we're not recouping. Yes, I know it sounds like a big number. Yes, I understand it may be completely wrong, but it's the best data we have right now. And short of us going into a workshop and talking about it and figuring all that stuff out, it's, man, I don't wanna workshop it, I don't wanna table it, but that's just where I am. I took this study at face value and never thought we'd have this discussion.
Here I am. I, the two percent thing that Mark brought up, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm good with, and the twenty-five percent, uh, and then as was brought up, that maybe a decade out, get it to a hundred percent. Uh, I think Amber's deal here, when I'm looking, looking at the industrial office and all that, that's, some of those numbers are pretty prohibitive. I, if, and, you know, some people have deep pockets, but if I were looking at some of the numbers involved, I'd say, no, thank you, uh, on the hundred percent thing. So, uh, as I say, I'm, I'm good with the, with, with some of her, some of Amber's provisions and then the, the ten and the twenty-five and get to a hundred within a ten-year range, I probably will not be here, but I'll leave that up to somebody else to.
Well, inflation, five years from now, because of inflation, this isn't gonna feel like so much. That's a compromise, right?
Right. I'll throw this out. Um, we, we still have a lot of, I think, details to work out. Um, is there something we could vote just on the ten percent tonight? Fine tune what we all really, really want and come back and vote on, because it seems like we really need to get the ten percent thing done before anything else. We've only got two weeks before, before the next meeting. We could all write out our plans for what we think is best. I, I, I don't know. I mean, it, it, we're, we're all over the place. Um, and I think coming to anything that, that we are going to codify tonight is difficult, to say the least, especially without our attorney not here. So.
I think we all agree that the seven that are coming for, that we have before us, we all, I think we all agree, we should impose a ten percent on those. So I kinda understand where you're at, but I mean, I'd like to have something in place again if we don't like it.
True. We can always, and can I say one more thing, ma'am, mayor? Um, as for the expert thing, you can pay an expert to say anything you want him to say. And I'm not saying that that's what they did, but they know who their audience is. It's the city who wants money. So guess what numbers they're gonna come back with? The highest numbers they can come back with. So is this the real impact in today's dollars? I don't know. And there's nobody here to answer that question from Duncan. So that's why I have a problem with these. We've got people that are real world people out here that are doing this stuff and they're saying, these are outrageous. They're already paying fees in other places because they're developing in other places and they're saying, these are ridiculous numbers. So to me, they're as much an expert as the, the people that wrote this study for us.
So I, I just wanted to, to remind you guys, we can't do the ten percent. So I, I just wanted to, to remind you guys, we can't do the ten percent on the seven without knowing the square footage of what we're going to charge per, per square foot. So right now.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
So the twenty-five percent, we'd have to vote on the twenty-five percent for right now as well to get the ten percent for the seven?
Correct.
Well, wait, wait, wait. We, we know it's, we know we're gonna charge ten percent.
Why can't we just take ten percent?
Say it's ten percent of the twenty.
Ten percent of these numbers.
Ten percent of that number.
If we go with the scaling, is that what you're saying, Mayor?
If we go with Amber's scaling?
Well, the scaling is based on these numbers.
Right, so we just say ten percent of these numbers.
It's ten percent of whatever's on these numbers.
Right, but you were talking about changing the square footage. So if you have to change the square footage, then you're going to have different numbers.
So don't do that.
On the seven.
Well, in that case, but this, this is only gonna be codified into the new, not, I mean, am I making any sense? I don't know if I am.
I got lost there.
This is gonna be for anything past these seven that we need to address now. So this, this will address the future beyond that. We could base the, I think, again, this may be a question the attorney needs to answer, but I think we could base the, the ten percent based on the numbers we have in front of us, because that's what we got. This is a conceptual thing, which I like. But, you know, we can't, we don't have an agreement on where we're gonna divide the line, right?
Yeah, I just don't wanna talk about it. We have a special meeting or some kind of workshop, that's all we're gonna do there, unless we'll do it here during the council meeting.
You know, I've kind of wrote all over Amber's copies she gave me. And I've got two, two formulated plans. I've got the ten percent for the seven and I've got one that takes seven years to get to a hundred. And I've got the one that goes, it's a little faster, it's a four-year. And then we implement the twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred. The seven-year plan's twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty, fifty, then seventy-five, seventy-five, then year, seven-year, a hundred percent. And we could implement Amber's scaling where we eliminate the middle section of each of, each of those divided categories and we increase, multi-family would go up to fifty units and then it would have a second, multi-family, you'd have fifty-one units or more. And the break or the discount you would get for doing fifty-one units or more would be twenty-five versus, instead of the fifty. So, you know, you still get a deduction of twenty-five percent.
What did you, I'm sorry, what did you say, Al, when you increased it, when you scaled it down?
Fifty-one or more.
Was it half of fifty, like you're scaling it down by fifty percent?
Correct, yes. For example, the first one's twenty-five percent for the, for year one would be twenty-five percent of the total. And then year two, it would just stay the same. So if we see, you know, we're killing development here, we can stop it there. You know, if everything's steady and everything's.
Could we just make it really simple and just not do the, the year one, year two, year three? Just evaluate it every year? Be a little simpler to put in.
But if we have a path going forward, instead of just saying we're gonna look at it every year and kick the can down the road, I feel more comfortable with that than I do just saying, we'll look at it in a year, we'll look at it in a year, and we'll just kind of evaluate. I'd rather have a plan in, in place of where we're going than to rather just say, I'm gonna keep looking at the map next.
But also, we gotta think about these businesses and things that are planning out five and ten years. They're gonna look at our numbers and see the impact fees that we're looking to implement and bypasses. We may not be sa-, if we look at it that way, we may not be studying it immediately now, but we're gonna put a stunting period on the city. We're gonna be the ones placing a stunting period for people that are gonna have to do it. We're having to do it now by putting those in place for people trying to plan in the future of our growth.
But the city's already stunted and we continue to stunt ourselves ever more every time we bring somebody in. Even, even if Danny gets his point at twenty-five percent, we're losing seventy-five percent of that impact fee.
I will not put my name on something that's going to completely stop business in Tawny Town and have one hundred percent will completely stop business in Tawny Town.
Well, you, you may, you may be right, I don't know that, we don't know that. And if we look at it year by year, there are a thousand factors that could impact it and we might misread the tea leaves. I, I understand where you're coming from, Misty, I absolutely agree.
I started to say, I've seen several people get up and walk around and I'd like to be one of myself, so take five, five minutes to foster a cause.